Good afternoon, all. Welcome to this month's regular meeting of the El Paso ISD Board of Trustees. I just want to inform you that if anyone needs translation services, you can visit us in our technology room in the back and we'll assist you. Bienvenidos a todos. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy. Si alguno de ustedes necesita servicios de traducción, por favor nos visite en la sala de tecnología. Lo podemos asistir. Gracias.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:01. We're going to go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand with us.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And good evening, all. We are a nation, one nation, one individual. Liberty and justice for all.
And can you please show me for a moment a silence? Thank you. This will take us to item number four. Board of, just recognitions. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board President Iribali, Board members, and Ms. Ayvedra. I am proud to be here tonight to present this month's recognitions. Before we get started, if I can ask everyone to turn their attention to the back of the room and enjoy a piece by the award-winning Ornado Middle School Jazz Band in honor of Board Recognition Month. Thank you. We hope you enjoyed that amazing performance. And now for our first recognition this evening is for the talented group of students you just heard. The honored Ornado Middle School Jazz Band has done it again. Not only did the band earn the distinction of being the best in Texas, but now it is one of the best in the nation as it just won the privilege to perform at the Midwest Clinic. In Chicago, it is the world's largest instrumental music education conference attended annually by audience of more than 17,000 educators, students, and professionals. At the Midwest Clinic, performances are given by more than 50 outstanding musical organizations from around the world. And Ornado Middle School Jazz was one of only two middle schools in the nation to be chosen and performed at the prestigious Midwest Clinic in December of last year in Chicago. Please help me welcome and congratulate them with a big round of applause.
Ms. Beal, I can't see her.
Some of the kids kneeling, yeah.
Yeah, can we have some of these kids kneeling? So we could have some of these kids on the edge to come over here. Yeah? What, some of these kids over here? Put him in the back. He's tall. This guy over here?
Where?
The taller student. We can have him.
The very end on the other end, please.
Thank you. In the back.
Can you get, just want to make sure we see everyone's face. Can everyone see the camera? Yeah? Okay. Smile. Which camera first? Leo, right here first.
Sorry. Just a second.
And now, right here? And now here? Parents, anyone want to take a photo before? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Our next recognition is for an outstanding Bowie Bear alum, Ms. Julieta McManus from Bowie, who has served, who has served on the Alumni Association Board for 47 years. We invite you to view this short video featuring Ms. McManus.
Here we have your legacy. The Bowie's Bears, Dan.
I've been on the board since 1976, which makes me, which make it, I think they tell me 47 years, but I guess it is. But it's been wonderful. And like I tell them, the reason I stay is because I believe in the board, of course. And I get to meet so many beautiful people, and they get younger and younger. Make me feel younger, too. We have a lot of things that we do, you know, the dances and then like this, a magazine. And I was in the committee, in several committees, and the scholarships, of course, are very important. But eventually, two years after I was in the board, they chose me as secretary. And I was secretary for 32 years, until computers came around. And then, forget it. No. But, no. And so I've served in a lot of the board, you know, committees. And it's been wonderful. My brothers and sisters came to Bowie. We were 10 in the family. I'm number eight. And except for my youngest one, because they, we moved out of, we lived on 9th Street, and they were tearing the house down. The government took over the house. So we had to move. We moved over by El Paso High School. She's the only one that survived. But all of us are Bowie Bears. And I've been always so proud to be a Bowie Bear. Well, just keep supporting the alumni because that's our main focus, to give scholarships. And this year, we gave 10? No, 20? 20 scholarship? 60? 24 scholarships, which was $66,000 worth of scholarship, which is the most we've ever given. So, but we depend on our, on our, you know, alumni to come and help us and continue that. And like I tell everybody, you know, we live Bowie, but Bowie doesn't leave us. It's always there.
Photo? Yes. Photo?
Do you want to join here for the photo? You guys want to join? Join for the photo? Social position, huh? You guys want to join in the photo?
Yes. Uh-huh. Come on. Please join us. Yeah, all the Bowie Bears.
So I think we might have to.
That's good. Thank you. Let's thanks Ms. Mc, let's thank Ms. McManus for her dedication and service with a huge round of applause.
That was a good video. So do you recognize our Board of Trustees this month? We have one of our All-Star dancers.
Is that me or you? You're reading that?
I couldn't read. Okay. And then after the video, you want to read? If not, I.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
As we recognize our Board of Trustees this month, we have one of our all-state dancers, Emma Howerton, from Franklin High School, with a solo expression of gratitude, love, acceptance, courage, and leadership as she performs "Phenomenal Woman."
Many people wonder where my secret lies. I'm not cute or built to suit a fashion model's size. When I start to tell them, they think I'm telling lies. I say, it's in the reach of my arms, the span of my hips, the stride of my step, the curl of my lips. I'm a woman, phenomenally. I walk into a room just as cool as you please, and to a man the fellows stand or fall down on their knees. Then they swarm around me, a hive of honeybees. I say, it's the fire in my eyes, the flash of my teeth, the swing in my waist, the joy in my feet. I'm a woman, phenomenally. Men themselves have wondered what they see in me. They try so much, but they can't touch my inner mystery. When I try to show them, they say they still can't see. I say, it's in the arch of my back, the sun of my smile, the ride of my breasts, the grace of my style. I'm a woman, phenomenally. Now you understand just why my head's not bowed. I don't shout or jump about or have to talk real loud. When you see me passing, it ought to make you proud. I say, it's in the click of my heels, the bend of my hair, the palms of my hands, the need for my care. Because I'm a woman, phenomenally. Phenomenal woman, all you women and me.
You think when you want to run for office, it's going to be for something specific. I'm going to build a brand-new school. I'm going to make a brand-new program. But when you get into that role, you realize it's much more than that. And really, what we decided to focus on as a board and myself is creating a situation for kids that they have the best learning opportunities that they could have.
I decided to become a board member to represent our kids, our district, to help our kids grow and continue to encourage them to get a higher education and to advocate for those kids in need and be a voice for them.
My favorite moment, I think, of being a trustee is when we reduced the homework load on all of our students. For about 20 minutes, I was probably the most popular person in El Paso, at least among the kids. And that was a very good feeling.
My most memorable moment for El Paso Independent School District was hiring Ms. Ayvedra. I felt very proud of the fact that we had an Hispanic female. And I was one of the few and only female Hispanics in that room when we hired her. It was an historic moment for all of us.
The main reason I ran to become a trustee was to represent the area that I grew up in. The same schools that I'm representing now are the same schools that I went to as a kiddo. You know, as a child, I went to Hillside, MacArthur, and Burgess. So when I was asked by some friends, you know, if I'd be interested in running, and then to have the opportunity to serve the same area that I grew up in, that was kind of the cherry on top.
A lot of the work that we do happens on the dais, but there's so much work that happens in between board meetings, too, where we're really spending time with community members, listening to their concerns, really understanding what it is that children need in the classrooms, what teachers need to be successful. And then, you know, synthesizing that and creating policies and making decisions that are going to last for generations. So that work is really what grounds me, what centers me, and it's why I serve.
It's hard to think of one memory, and I think of two. I think when we hired Yanis Ayvedra to be our superintendent, we were really turning the page for a better future at EPISD. And the second thing is when we passed the 7% raise for our teachers, I think the board committed to really saying that our focus was on the education and really being child-focused by investing in our teachers. So I'm really proud of that work that we've all done together.
January is a special month as we celebrate school board recognition, a time dedicated to honoring the selfless service of our dedicated community volunteers who serve on our school board. This year, the theme for the 2024 School Board Recognition is "Locally Elected, Community Connected", highlighting the strong bond between our elective representatives and the communities they serve. El Paso ISD is fortunate to have the support of seven outstanding El Pasuans who have stepped up as school trustees, making a difference and committing to the future of our city and the improvement of children's lives. Their dedication supports our mission to be the district of choice in the region, and it all starts with our board. Thank you. And now, Ms. Ayvedra will read a poem for the board.
Right. So Board of Trustees, we came across this poem. It's called "A Blessed" It's called "A Blessing for Leaders," and when we stumbled upon it, I felt like it was very appropriate as we recognize you as leaders. So, "A blessing for leaders. May you have the grace and wisdom to act kindly, learning to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. May you be hospitable to criticism. May you never put yourself at the center of things. May you act not from arrogance but out of service. May you work on yourself, building up and refining the ways of your mind. May those who work for you know you see and respect them. May you learn to cultivate the art of presence in order to engage with those who meet you. When someone fails or disappoints you, may the graciousness with which you engage be the stairway to renewal and refinement. May you treasure the gifts of the mind through reading and creative thinking so that you continue as a servant of the frontier, where the new will draw its enrichment from the old and you never become functionary. May you know the wisdom of deep listening, the healing of wholesome words, the encouragement of the appreciative gaze, the decorum of held dignity, the springtime edge of the bleak question. You may have a mind that loves frontiers so that you can evoke the bright feels that lie beyond the view of the regular eye. May you have good friends to mirror your blind spots. May leadership be for you a true adventure of growth." John Donahue. Thank you, Board, for your leadership. We appreciate you very much.
And on behalf of El Paso ISD, we would like to express our gratitude. A basket has been provided from your respective feeder pattern as a small token of our appreciation. And now I'll pass the mic over to President Iribali.
So, we all know the elephant in the room, that we have a city council-elect sitting up here with us today. And it's a sad day, because, you know, there's a lot to say about Josh. I came in two years after Josh, and I got to learn a lot from him. And I think one of the things I love about Josh is no matter what the issue is, you know two things: he's going to ask difficult questions, right? And then number two is, he's going to err on the side of caution and right and ethics. And Josh has kind of spearheaded this district in that way, and I can trust on him to look at any issue, to look at any process or anything that's going on in this district, from the agenda items to a question that's happening when staff is working with us, to really address the questions of community engagement. Is it equitable? Is it fair? Are we engaging the community? Are we listening? Are we doing true engagement versus just checking a box? And, you know, Josh, it's going to be a big hole that you leave in this board. We worked really hard to build that stability, and we're happy that you got the city council seat, and we know we're going to have a great partner on city council, but it's going to leave a big hole here, and we're really excited for you and look forward to what's next, because I don't think that's the stop for you. I think that's just one more step to what's in the future. And then, we have a very much-tenured trustee that has served with Josh the entire time that'd like to share some words.
So, I've served with Dr. Ayvedra the longest. He and I both got elected in 2019. He had high ambitions, lots of energy, and absolutely no clue what was about to hit us as a school district than the very next year. And it's no secret to anybody that follows this board that Dr. Ayvedra and I, over the years, have had some very passionate disagreements. And I knew that at the end of the day, and I just want to express, publicly express my appreciation to him, because I knew, no matter how many times we disagreed and maybe wanted to strangle each other behind the dais here, I knew that Josh was always coming at these disagreements from a place of integrity, a place of transparency, and I knew that I could always trust him. And to me, that's, and to a lot of other people, that's one of the most important things in the world, is that trust. So Mayor LeSueur, you're getting an incredibly gifted city rep, and I know that he's going to do great things. So, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your service over the last almost five years now.
At this time, I'm going to ask the board to step down again. We're going to take a picture. Josh, we do have a plaque for you, and I'll read it because I don't have a mic down there, but it says, "In recognition of outstanding leadership and dedicated service to the El Paso Independent School District." And as well, the star of the mountain will be lit for you. So as we're all driving home from our meeting tonight, just know that's the representative-elect star, right, tonight? So if you guys can, welcome in. A round of applause for Dr. Ayvedra for all his service.
Thank you. This concludes this month's recognitions.
Dr. Ayvedra is going to share some remarks. Thank you.
No, I, this is, this is a lot. I don't like being the center of attention. It makes me nervous, and I get all red, and I'm just really overwhelmed with love, and I just appreciate all of you. I think that when we got here, there was this idea that it was going to be impossible to do a lot of the things that we did here. It was back in 2019, and now, almost five years later, we're here in a very different EPISD, in a better EPISD. And I think that's what we set out when we do public service, to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the people that we're serving. And, you know, I was 30 back then, I'm 35 now, and it's, it's a lot. I have ganas now. And it's been what the district has paid me with, because they haven't given me $1. But over the years, I have just really appreciated being here. You know, I think that with trustee Call and I being the oldest members now, and now it's going to, or the most senior members on the board, I'd rather say, I think that now we have trustee Call as the most senior member since 2019. He was beating me by a month, because he didn't go to a runoff and I did. And I just really appreciate the teamwork that we've done, and I think in the last six months, it's been great to have trustee Quayle and trustee Beals come in and just join this team, join this family. And we have a blueprint for what's next at EPISD. I think the foundation has been set, and a lot of that has come from our great superintendent that's been here for two years, and really changed the way we communicate, the way we do things at EPISD, working on customer service, working to make the district a better place, focusing on the classroom. I think that it took me to understand the superintendent, say, you know, we are an adult-focused organization, and we serve children, and we changed that mindset. We went and started focusing on the whole child, to make this district a better place, focusing on the classroom, focusing on our teachers, to make sure that the education that we were doing was going to be adequate. And I just have enormous gratitude for all of you, and my dear Isabel, I think that we have built a really good team, and I look forward to working with you in a different role now, because there's a lot of stuff happening in the Northeast and the Neighborhood Association, and we'll work together to get that done. And I think trustee Hanani, I can't believe you came to this board two and a half years ago, and I appreciate the perspective that you bring, because I don't think we had that before you got here. And you started making us understand what the day-to-day in the classroom looks like because of your own experience, and I think that that's invaluable, and I think that we're seeing the fruits of the labor that the board has put in, and a lot of those ideas have been yours, and I just really appreciate you. And of course, trustee Iribali, I think that when you came on board, I was like, okay, I'm not the youngest person on the board anymore. And now I'm the second youngest, so thank you for that. But I think it's been a great journey, and I really appreciate your leadership. I think that we have formed a good team around the superintendent, knowing that that's what we need for this district, because I think we both saw our communities in shambles and needing a better voice, and that's why we ran for this position, to make sure that we can make that difference. And now, you know, you always saw me, the Northeast has been forgotten, and now I'm representing part of the Northeast that's not in your area, right? But I really see how forgotten it's been, and we need that strong voice, and I appreciate you for being on the board. And I think that there's a lot more to come. I think with trustee Call and I, just, it's been a journey. It's been ups and downs. It's been hard. It's been great, and we've been through so, so much together. And I look forward to being friends and with all of you. I think that that's, it's rare when you see a board function the way we did. There was a lot of dysfunction when I got here, and now we're a functioning board. We're out of the news, and we're getting stuff done here at EPISD, and I look forward to the next chapter. And it's really hard to leave EPISD, but I also don't think that it's ever going to be a good time to leave anything, and it's always going to be bittersweet. So I look forward to being on the other side and partnering and making sure that the superintendent is going to be doing stuff with the city, just so I have an excuse to hear what's going on at EPISD from you. But yeah, and my door is always going to be open, my heart's always going to be open, and I just really appreciate these four and a half years at EPISD. So thank you so much to all of you.
And before we get on with the meeting, and I apologize for this, we're going to do one more picture, so if the principals can come down, and the trustees can go down for one more. The gifts that were put together were compiled by the principals. We really do appreciate it. My wife makes fun of me, because seven days a week, I'm wearing something from EPISD and normally from my district, so I appreciate it, y'all. The principals and the feeder pattern. Yes, and the board. Dr. Ina. Thank you, everyone, for sparing with us. It was a special board meeting with Josh and board appreciation month. This will take us to our public forum. If you can point your attention to the screen, there will be a message that's conveyed.
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district. And board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display stability and decorum that is respect for other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes, sir. For the open forum speakers, Cameron Sierra.
Then I have to follow all the good things. Okay. Okay. Good evening, President Irabali, board members, and superintendent Messiah Vedra. My name is Cameron Sierra and I'm a proud SLP in the Northeast. I understand the need to have a balanced budget. Trust me, I do. I also understand the need to meet the legal obligations of IEPs in attempting to meet the needs of our most deserving children in our district, those with special needs. I would like to give you a brief update of our current situation with SLPs in our district. Not the sugar-coated version, the real version. When I mentioned previously that the names on our email list from two years ago that no longer had 24 of those names on them, well, now we can add six more to that list from that time period to now. We had two choose to retire before the start of the school year, one retire in December, one quit abruptly in the middle of the year, around October, saying what we are expected to do is just not realistic nor possible and couldn't do it anymore. One who was having to make up her own maternity leave from the spring, which she was docked for, mind you, and decided enough is enough, and she too left in December. And, oh, one more quit last week abruptly. Meanwhile, we had two new hires, one in December and one two weeks ago. However, they were set up with the most unrealistic expectations ever, to the point where the most recent hire, despite, and I quote, "Cameron, you are really the only person who I truly feel is helping me right now, but I have been set up for failure and I am afraid that I made the wrong decision coming to work for EPISD. I don't know if I will be able to stay. I am doing everything in my power to try to help all of my peers, especially the new ones, to hold on tight and provide as much support as I can. However, I too am bleeding in the trenches. This is an unrealistic set of expectations for anyone. I don't know what's happening with the contract compensatory companies, but what they are supposed to be doing, what I do know is that our beloved SLP, who is using a walker and on oxygen, should not be expected to perform her own compensatory services owed, nor should the previous therapist for her maternity leave at another campus, nor a new hire who is not even employed by our district prior to the time being owed. This is wrong on so many levels. I said it before and I'll say it again. Maybe if we moved to a 107 from the beginning, this might not have happened in the first place. Retention bonuses for those who have literally killed themselves trying to do right by the children of our district could have helped. The district-wide retention bonus may have been like mine. Mine was just spent on an MRI because our bodies are literally breaking down from the stress and pressure from trying to do the right thing all the time at all expenses. There is a window of opportunity if you don't see it yet. SISD SLPs are currently very upset. The clerks over there have been taken away. They are doing what EPISD SLPs have always had to do and then some. And they will go where money talks, especially if that added perk of having clerks isn't there anymore.
Time.
Thank you, Ms. Here.
Jennifer Marie Matichik.
It's Matichik. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you today. I stand before you to share in a stress and challenge that my family and I are currently facing due to a serious significant change in our lives. First, we are grappling with the daunting task of relocating my entire family. This decision has been thrust upon us, forcing us to uproot ourselves from a place where our children have laid down roots. The emotional toll this is leaving behind familiar surroundings, friends, and community cannot be understated. This is a source of great anxiety for all of us. Adding to our distress is a heartbreaking reality of shutting down the FFA farm. This has been a part of our family and the school since 1967. The farm holds not only sentimental value, but also represents a legacy that has been passed down through generations. The thought of bidding farewell to this cherished piece of history is deeply painful. Furthermore, the challenges of my contract have been exacerbated our stress levels. While being expected to continue fulfilling the same tasks at a significant portion of my salary being taken away, this sudden financial blow has left us feeling vulnerable and uncertain about our future. The weight of these challenges has taken a toll on our mental and emotional well-being. We find ourselves grappling with sleepless nights, constant worry, and a sense of helplessness. The stress has permitted every aspect of our lives affecting our relationships, our health, and our overall happiness. However, we face adversity. We are determined to find strength and resilience. We understand that we must confront these challenges head-on and seek solutions that will alleviate our stress and provide a sense of stability for our family. I'm actively engaging in open, honest communication with the relevant parties involved, expressing our concerns. However, that communication is not being reciprocated. It does not only add to our stressful situation. I implore you to understand the magnitude of stress and anxiety that my family and I are experiencing doing to this relocation, the closure of the beloved FFA farm, and the financial strain caused by changing in my contract. We are determined to navigate these challenges with resilience and seek support necessary to overcome them. Your understanding, empathy, and support during this trying time would mean the world to us. Today, if you are not aware, I want to shed light on a matter that's close to my heart is the uncertainty future of the FFA farm. Since January of 2023, we have faced the unfortunate reality of not receiving the necessary funding to sustain the operation. This has put a tremendous strain on the ability to continue to work, to complete the work that we're passionate about. Again, with my contract, this has left me with a sense of unease. While my job description remains the same, it's been proposed that my workdays be reduced. This change raises concerns about the feasibility of maintaining the same level of productivity and quality that we have strived for over years.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Jody E. Matichik. Sherry Ryder.
Good evening, Board President Irabali, esteemed board members and Messiah Vedra. My name is Sherry Ryder. I'm a proud and loyal EPISD speech pathologist for the 36 years in this district. I have just returned from an exhausting three and a half month of FMLA and leave of absence due to surgical complications. While I'm glad to be back, I return to a giant mess. You see, Stepping Stones, the company that was given a $200,000 contract that was supposed to help when SLPs are out on FMLA, did not provide any assistance until the week of Christmas break. I did warn you all about this in September. Stepping Stones did not and still does not have adequate personnel to help us. They continue to look in our own backyard. The SLP assistant that came to Murfree to provide therapy for all of my students didn't provide therapy to even half of them. My wonderful diagnostician was voluntold to print out a copy of 84 students' goals and objectives for her because the SLP couldn't do therapy without a hard copy. Wrong, wrong, wrong. We are not in the Dark Ages. She should have had limited access to our system in order to look at IEPs. Nevertheless, she did not see any of the self-contained students in the middle school, saw my little three- and four-year-olds once, but told the diag that they didn't listen and were too much and that she didn't know what to do with them. I never saw them again, did not leave any documentation, no notes, no phone call, nothing. So with that missing information, I added up all the sessions that I missed and started to cry. 570 minutes per child that are seen two times a week equals 22,800 minutes. 300 minutes per child that are seen one time a week are 12,300 minutes, totaling 35,100 minutes that I owe. I'm expected to make up this time even though I was docked all of my sick leave in those two pages. How can I, as a single SLP, do this? I was told that I would have help, but where is it? The answer is, I can't do it. It's impossible. Compensatory speech therapy is not an EPISD SLP problem. Compensatory speech therapy is a district problem. Until you all acknowledge that the SLPs play a vital role toward district, bringing in millions of shards dollars, having huge overwhelming caseloads, doing a bunch of nonsense paperwork, and you relying on false information from the HR department about what we should pay, which district pays what, which is actually not true because they didn't mention retention or large stipends, we will never be able to fix this or address it. We need to be able to capture. The only way to do that is to move us to a 107 with the appropriate salary. It's not rocket scientists. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Adan Lopez.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, and Board of Trustees. My name is Adan Lopez. For the past 28 years, I have dedicated myself to education, serving in roles from a bilingual teacher to the former principal of Canyon Hills Middle School. Parallel to this, I have been committed to serving our nation through the Navy Reserve for 35 years, currently holding the rank of a commander equivalent to a lieutenant colonel in the Army. Today, I stand before you to address the barriers and disparities I have faced upon my return to EPISD. My recent military service obligation from January through September of 2023 is a testament to the dual commitment that reservists like myself uphold. This dedication often requires significant personal and familial sacrifices. I stand before you today as a combat veteran who served in Kandahar, Afghanistan, in support of Operation Enduring Freedom post 9/11. Upon my return to EPISD, I encountered various departments, I encountered various departments' significant challenges and disappointments, highlighting issues of inequity and disrespect for my service to country. These issues are not unique to me, but to all who balance civilian careers with military obligations. My re-entry into EPISD was marred by a comment from an HR director who referred to my military service as a vacation. Such a statement is not only disrespectful, but grossly misunderstands the nature of military service, serving our country under oath. To defend this constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, is a profound responsibility that should never be dishonored. The initial remark paved the way for a series of troublesome experiences. I was notified on my assignment just the day before reporting to work, placed in a role not equivalent to my previous position as principal, encountered errors with my personal leave, and I was denied professional development opportunities for principals. The Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act exists to protect service members from these kinds of obstacles. It ensures that returning service members are not disadvantaged in their civilian careers and they are promptly reinstated to equivalent positions. It is my perception and reality that my post-military service has been blemished by unjust treatment by certain EPISD officials. This includes discrimination and harassment rooted in my past, present, and future military obligations ordered by the Department of Defense. EPISD prides itself in supporting the local military community through partnerships, recognitions, and events. This type of advocacy should be extended to EPISD service members as they transition from service to country to their civilian careers with equity and respect. In closing, I urge the board to take immediate action to rectify these inequities. This includes conducting a thorough investigation into these discriminatory procedures, holding responsible parties accountable, and implementing measures to prevent such occurrences in the future for EPISD members.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Your three minutes is up.
I welcome the opportunity to meet with the board behind closed doors to provide specific details and seek resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Ursula Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Ursula Martinez and I have been a loyal EPISD speech-language pathologist for the past 20 years. Throughout those 20 years, we have seen many changes and added duties to our workloads. With COVID, we have seen a substantial increase in student needs and an enormous increase with our pre-K and kinder numbers. The national caseload average is 45 to 55 students. I previously told you that I had 108 students. Today, I have 118, with 33 of them being pre-K through kinder. I have an assistant only three days per week, with no idea if and when she will be given to me full-time. Besides providing therapy, I also have to prep IEPs, reads evaluation reports, pass out, gather, scan, archive referral packets, fill out, pass out, sign receipts, archive receipts for progress reports, fill out, pass out, receive, scan, and archive notices of ARDs and procedural safeguards receipts. of ARDs and procedural safeguards receipts, write speech logs within seven days of providing services, schedule, hold, finalize, provide copies of IEPs, speak to parents and teachers about their concerns, print, pass out, sign, archive receipts of accommodations. It is becoming difficult for me to provide speech therapy to the students I see because of the number of ARDs and clerical work I have to do. So far, I have attended 117 ARDs. This means I'm not able to provide speech therapy when I am in these meetings, yet I am told I need to make up those services. The contract company you have hired is not providing services to our students. Mylum Douglas Moy, to name a few, have not received any speech therapy services. We are close to losing our new hire SLP assigned to Douglas and Moy because her principals are demanding she provide compensatory services. That is physically and mentally impossible for her to do. She is being set up for failure. Our fellow bilingual SLP assessor is returning from FMLA, and she's going to have to make up her therapy from her campuses and test all the bilingual students for the entire district that were left when she went out on FMLA. Your current SLPs are drowning. It not only affects our students' quality of speech therapy, but it affects our mental health. This used to be my sanity to go to work after my daughter committed suicide. No longer. It adds to my depression. You all see us drowning. We've been splashing and crying for help, but none of you want to even throw us a lifeline. What will it take for you to help? When will you finally do the right thing to try to keep the remaining SLPs that you do have? Because whatever it is you think you're doing is not working. We have already lost more SLPs since the last time my colleagues and I spoke at the board meeting. We deserve a raise and to be paid our worth. We have been loyal to EPISD. It's your turn to be loyal to us.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Your three minutes.
Board President Iribali, Board members, Ms. Ayaveira. First of all, I want to give credit where credit's due. The decision that came out of the special board meeting regarding your raise, that was the right and noble thing to do. Thank you. Rigged, I had to change what I wanted to say. Rigged games. Only a fool would knowingly play a rigged game when there are honest games available. Harassment, discrimination, and retaliation for reporting them is covered by EPSD policy DIA. That process for protection and redress has been deliberately and cynically weaponized against the reporting victim and their union by employee relations. It is now absolving the harasser, creating allegations, and then going retaliatory on the reporting victim. As I advised Superintendent and Mr. Iribali, Board President Iribali, on Friday, attempts to rectify this over the years have proven frustrating and futile. Henceforth, anything that may or should, quote, may or quote, should be reported to HR under DIA will instead be reported directly to the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and corresponding state agency. Employee relations investigation process is another rigged game. It's been over a year since Ms. Dale LaRosa and I brought the problems of you're guilty until I can prove you guilty or declare you guilty without proof, despite, we've alerted you that it's gotten worse. Our efforts to reform it and the due process envisioned by the U.S. Constitution have been equally frustrating and futile. When asked questions in writing about custodial interrogations, very senior personnel, HR person responded eight times with "people have free will." And the Army would call that a faux pas answer unless you figure out what that acronym means. Short-term impact, as HR is denying union representation at two key meetings in the investigative process and denying the accused the findings in writing, all termination recommendations will be brought to the board and a hearing officer requested. My job is not to defend bad teachers. The hardest thing I have to do is sit there and look at a teacher and say, there's no good outcome. And think in my head, what in God's name were you thinking when you did or said that? My members are being taught two phrases. May I leave the room to talk with my union representative? And as this false allegation has the potential for criminal charges, aren't you supposed to Mirandaize me? This goes back to that key concept of custodial interrogation.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Your three minutes is up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Iribali, members of the board, Ms. Ayaveira. I am Norma de la Rosa, president of the El Paso Teachers Association. There are two items I wish to address this afternoon. Earlier this afternoon, there was discussion on possible revisions to the superintendent's employment contract. I wasn't able to be at the meeting earlier this afternoon, but I want to give you kudos for the decision that was made. Thank you on behalf of my members. But now it is time to go to work on that most difficult topic, employee compensation. This will be, this will be a most definitely a difficult process. If EPISD is to be competitive, paying a teacher at 10 years at slightly higher than a first-year teacher is not being competitive and will not retain teachers. Please be rest assured that EPTA is willing and ready to help work through this process with you, the board, to get the best for our employees. My second point deals with the district's decision, or more precisely, HR's decision, to not allow members' representation related to investigation findings. Let me refresh your memories about our organization's concerns about the triple standards that are prevalent in this district, and the ones on the short end of the stick are the employees. When in the process investigators and HR repeatedly ignored CPS investigation findings, and those findings are favorable for the employee, it became a major point of contention, not just for my members, but those of AFT. When issues of discrimination and harassment are dismissed by HR, that has become a major point of contention. When my employees will tell you that in EPISD, you are guilty until proven guilty, that is a major point of contention. I have made that point to you on several occasions, but no relief in sight. In a coordinated effort with Mr. Moore and his organization, EPTA will also be bringing to the board grievances after every findings hearing and filing with EEOC on behalf of members to find relief for the continued harassment, discrimination, and targeting that occurs daily in this district. We will be glad to sit and talk with you, the board, about these issues in detail, as we seem to have exhausted all other avenues. But for now, enough is enough. Thank you.
Superintendent and the Board of Trustees, I am Mireli Valdez Jr., founder of the El Paso Genders and Sexuality Alliance Board. I rise this evening due to confirmation of the El Paso Independent School District being set to undergo the Borderline Rainbow Centers Diversity Resilience Institute of El Paso program on February 4th and 6th this year. I have never once stepped foot in this building and have been happy. Today is the first day that I am. To anyone who objects or questions if LGBTQIA2+ bias training is even genuinely necessary for EPISD, go to Instagram and search the username @EPGSABoard. In reality, drip is a matter of life or death for LGBTQIA2+ youth. Last year, we all saw the hate speech at a Paso High School. I quote, "God does not accept you as homosexual. God does not accept you in your sin. You are going to die." We see the warning signs that the state of hate against LGBTQIA2+ youth in EPISD is metastasizing like the cancer it is into something physical, and we must stop it before, before it becomes violent. I cannot sleep easy at night because I'm worried there will be a school shooting in EPISD. As I said at the last FBI LGBTQIA2+ roundtable, it is as if we have given up and are only prepared to react to a situation and are doing nothing to prevent it. Unchecked hate will turn into violence. This is the first attempt in the right, in the right direction by the El Paso Independent School, excuse me, by the El Paso Independent School District to try to restore its destroyed relationship with their LGBTQIA2+ youth. Credit is given where credit is due. There are still several policy reforms that must be passed to ensure our LGBTQIA2+ youth are actually safe, but for now, let's celebrate this historic achievement for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public forum. That moves to item number six, which is our consent agenda. I have two speakers. I have Mr. Ross Moore on item 6B1, approval of budget amendment to allocate funds for personnel-related costs, record of sale district property.
Board President Iribali, Board members, Ms. Ayaveira, my name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. This is critical decision point number two. Aren't you extraordinarily fortunate this evening? On September 28, 2016, the EPISD Board of Trustees unanimously passed the contract with the voters regarding the 2016 bond after they were advised by their attorney that the resolution would be legally binding for current and future school boards. Don't you just wonder about people who ignore their lawyer when they say it is binding and enforceable? And sorry, there's no Mr. Peabody with a Wayback Machine to undo Mr. Cabrera, Ms. Fenimbach, and Mr. Hatch's binding action. The $3.2 million from the sale of Morehead is a de facto and danger bond saving and should go to support additional, this additional funding should go to support increased compensation and benefit. This may actually help you by plugging that money in with the retention issues the district's facing. How you vote on the Morehead sale savings and in the future on sales like Roberts Elementary, the former Roberts Elementary School, have deep and lasting consequences. As I said, you're at a critical decision point. Please do the right and honorable thing for the right and honorable reasons. Like it or not, EPISD word is its bond. No pun intended. Thank you.
Ms. Norma de la Rosa, on the same items? Thank you. Three minutes.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Iribali, members of the board, Ms. Ayaveira. I am Norma de la Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Tonight, the decision that this board makes as to how this money from the sale of district property, Morehead Middle School in LaFarell, will be used, may have some unplanned lasting consequences. A recommendation was made by the district legal council superintendent and approved by the board that monies paid to the district for the sale of district properties would be applied to increasing compensation for EPISD employees. It is only fair since annual compensation for EPISD employees has not been competitive as EPISD still ranks near the bottom in salaries when compared to the other districts in the region. Despite the opposition of our members to the 2016 bond, EPTA leadership convinced members to support it based on the understanding that these additional monies would be applied to employee compensation. Employees took that to heart, that the board and future boards and the superintendent would keep their promise, not only to the employees in this district, but to the voters who approve the 2016 bond. They came to work despite the low compensation increase, despite the struggles, but they made their choice to return because they trusted that the superintendent and the board would keep their word. Looking at this agenda item tonight, how you vote to approve these monies will send a message to employees and voters that may have lasting consequences and whatever those consequences may be. What that message will be will all depend on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any trustees want to pull any items off the consent agenda? No? Call for motion for...
Can I just get clarifying information on B? So I guess pull it.
On 6B1?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with 6B1 pulled?
Move to approve.
Without 6B1, I should say. Got a motion by trustee call. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second. Second by trustee Acevedo. That's, I'll do it. Okay. Got all mumbled jumbled up there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously with a first motion by trustee call and a second by trustee Acevedo. That brings us to item 6B1. Dr. Acevedo, you pulled the item. If you want to ask a question.
Yeah, I guess, Sessi, just for what we just heard in public comment, I'm wondering, is that what was said during the 2016 bond, that any sale of, can you just clarify that for the record?
So for the record, the, and trustee, Erdnanes, can you hear me? Okay, I just wanted to be sure I was speaking loud enough for you. There was a section three in the, what has commonly been called the compact with the voters, which was a resolution that was passed by the board back then on April 28 of 2016. Section three of that resolution said, "Within limitations required by principles of sound fiscal management, the current Board of Trustees of the district believes that, one, it is a priority make teacher and campus compensation and/or benefits more competitive with other area school districts in order to retain and recruit talented and experienced teachers and campus staff. And, two, that the actual savings to the district derived from the consolidation and closures of schools should support additional funding for any such increased compensation and benefits." That's the actual language of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I realize that none of us were here when that happened, but at the same time, and I realize that a lot of this may not seem binding in that sense because we weren't here. We weren't working on the 2016 bond, and if anything, we have had to pick up that bond in shambles and make sure that we could get it implemented because it's been such a mess this whole time. And so I'm, I'm just wanting to say to be cognizant of what was said at that time, and this was not something that was a negative thing. I think that we just need to take that into consideration as we move forward at the district. And I realize I'm not going to be here, but I'm just wanting to say that, and that's why I appreciate you reading that.
So I just want to be clear to trustee Dr. Acevedo. The motion that was moved back then in September 28 of 2016, it was a motion by trustee Bird, seconded by trustee Jesky at the time, and it was passed unanimously, that the board approved the written resolution presented at that meeting, which expressed the board's intent with respect to certain 2016 bond projects to be completed following approval of the voters and the establishment of a bond accountability committee for the 2016 bond, which prioritizes the use of actual savings from school consolidation for teacher and campus staff compensation, and specifies, this is the part that I think is getting confused, a public process with respect to the disposition of excess school properties. So that's a distinction. It's talking about savings versus actual proceeds from a sale. Those are two different things.
And I appreciate it, Ms. Collins. I just want to share, you know, I think I can, I can really say for this board that employee compensation is of the utmost importance to this board. I do want to point out that two years ago was a 7% increase, the largest in history of EPISD. And so we are being very cognizant of the savings that is coming from the bond consolidations of what our financial structure is. As we look across the state and across our own community of the ramifications of what's happening with the state not providing the funding that they should have provided to public education, we're doing what we need to do to ensure that this district lasts long-term and still provide for our employees. I'm not saying we're doing the best job. We can definitely get better. We can definitely work on roles and responsibilities. We can definitely look at compensation in the next few years. That's definitely not off the table. But what you do see from this board is a concentrated effort in that direction, and any other statement is just quite disingenuous and just misinformation. This is a board that has fought for this. This is a board that has planned for this, and I'm very proud of this board. I stand behind every decision this board has made in regards to employee compensation, and I look forward to the next several years with this group as we look and address this. So with that, entertain a motion. I move to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Dr. Osavedo and a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The item passes unanimously, 7-0. This will bring us to item 7A, quarterly update on school facility planning and construction 2016 bond program. Ms. Ayvedra?
Yes, we're nearing the end of our projects for the 2016 bond. Our new chief operations officer, Stacy Pearson, will share where we are as we're getting to, getting to the end of the 2016 bond projects and closing, I guess, Coronado soon.
Closing the bond.
Closing the...
Construction of Coronado.
I saw Ms. Williams out there.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, closing of the bond project soon for Coronado. Sorry about that.
Mr. Pearson?
Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, fellow trustees, here's our quarterly bond update as presented. The bond status for as budget as of November 30th, 2023, which was the last time our finance team ran our numbers on bond 2016 project, cost committed to date is $704,185,624. Forecasted additional commitments are $24,583,919, which represents the 3% on the graph. And then the EPISD bond program total is $728,769,643 as presented. Bond program status...
Really quick, Mr. Pearson, I just want any clarification. I got this question today about what percentage of the bond was completed. It's 97% and the 3% is still what's pending?
Yes, sir. We're 97% complete.
And that 3% is the pending, which is the Coronado project?
Yes, sir. Well, it's Coronado and a few punchless items at other places.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Program status, program contingency as of November 30th. We are at $29,985,386. Board of Trustees approved program contingency allocation to date is $29,402,496. Program savings is $13,704,688. Project end and program contingency balance is $14,324,578. Interest revenue and admin expenses year-to-date as of November 30th, that total number is The Thomas Jefferson project is 99% complete. Here's some photoshops of that campus project. Again, and those that are listed at 99% complete, that's because there's still some punchless items that we have to close out on. Bobby Joe Hill. Bobby Joe Hill is also listed at 99% complete. The green, of course, on the map represents the completed areas. Coach Wiley Hartley is at 90% complete. As you can see, the 10% that is left remain outstanding. That's our civil work out of the fields to be completed by the, final acceptance is our final completion date of March. And there's some more pictures of Coach Wiley Hartley. Captain Gabriel Navarrete Middle School, we're at 99% complete, and there's some aerial photos of Gabarrete, I mean Navarrete as well. Punchless items to be completed. Coronado is 96% complete, and there are some items left there for the Coronado project. And the red that you see that is left, it is about 99% complete, but we left it red because there is, that's our building B. We left it red because there are some punchless items and cosmetic things that we need to go back and touch up before that area is deemed complete. And then there's the area of that, aerial of that, I'm sorry. And that's the end of our update. We have any questions?
Trustee, call.
Yeah, a quick question about, about the Coriada Coronado.
Yes, sir.
What's the status of the, of the materials for the shade structure? I know that that was, you know, something that we discussed a couple months ago. I'm just hoping to get an update on that.
Yes, sir. We have the shade structure material purchased within the district, and we just took the RFP off the street. We do have an acceptable bid that we're ready to present to the board. Once we get through finalizing all the procurement regulations that we have finalized, and then the expected completion of that is summer 2024.
Okay. So we can expect, you know, something to come, come next board meeting on that?
Yes, sir. What we're looking, what we're trying to make sure we time up is, we don't want to interfere with HB and the items that they have to close out, so we're trying to allow them runway to finish out their project before we bring in a new contractor to start on the shade structure.
Yeah, certainly, that's the priority.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great presentation. I appreciate it.
And I do want to take a second and just applaud the district. I know that we made a commitment to the community to have our kiddos out in Coronado post-break. I know it took some finagling and some work, extra work on our side to kind of get that to happen, but from, from all accounts that I'm hearing, the community was very happy to move into the new building at Coronado, and then things are going well. So thank you for finding creative solution to a complex problem. I think that that community truly appreciates us keeping our promise there.
Thank you so much. We're working to complete the project.
Thank you. There's no other questions. That will take us to our final item, which is number eight, overview of future board meeting agenda items.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Eraboli and trustees. Really, some of the big things that are coming to the board next month. Number one, the Texas Academic Performance Report Presentation in Public Hearing. Although we've not had any ratings this school year because of the pending lawsuit, we will be sharing with the board data that has come to us from the TAPER report. We also have, are bringing back to the board the equity RFP for the board to consider. We invite public comment, and we invite any community members to join us for the board meeting for that particular item in March. We will be updating the board with a NESA report, and also will be bringing the board information about the work of the SAS Committee and the school attendance zones. So that's what we have coming in February and in March. Thank you so much.
So that sounds like to me, trustees, that we have a really busy February, so get ready for a long meeting for that one. Lucky you, Dr. Osavedo. And with that, we are going to call the meeting at 6:31. Thank you, everyone, for your time and your work.